Good evening. The July 11th, 2023 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Please place your mobile phones on silent mode for the meeting. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Bryner.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Jessling.
Here.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, God created, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I would like to welcome everyone to the July 11th, 2023 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via District Paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing this Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it be an item on the agenda or another issue. To participate in hearing of the public interest, public section, interested speakers must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Signups are available online through the school district's website or onsite prior to the 7:00 PM meeting, in this case, the 5:00 PM meeting. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be called to the microphone. When addressing the board, please state your name and address, questions to the board present. Each person may speak only once per segment, and comments are limited to three minutes. The purpose of the hearing of the public is for our community members to address the board. The board continues to welcome feedback from the community as an important component to the conducting of business. This is an information gathering opportunity for the board and administration so we can work to best serve our community. If at the end of the public participation, we do not make a statement, please know this is no demonstration of lack of care for comments shared by our community. Rather, we want to be thoughtful in our approach, and we will provide a response in a timely manner when appropriate. This meeting is being televised live and on delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable Channel 1026 in Mentor and Channel 1025 in Mentor-on-Lake. This meeting is also being recorded and can be found on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Thank you. At this time, we have district highlights and recognitions.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade. Tonight, I would like to begin by recognizing one of our administrators. I would like to ask Dr. Joe Glavine to please join me at the podium. As many of you may already know, Dr. Glavine was recently announced as the CTE Administrator of the Year by the Ohio Association of Career Technical Education. He is the Director of the Lake Shore Compact and the Director of Business Partnerships and Career Technical Education for us here in Mentor Public Schools. In his role with that compact, he has taken on the responsibility of helping provide CTE experiences for students in the Mentor, Wickliffe, and Euclid school districts, but he has also advocated for all CTE students and stakeholders across the state. Dr. Glavine is a model for fellow CTE administrators of what is possible when they collaborate to encourage alignment of business, education, and government for the betterment of the community and all stakeholders. Personally, I have leaned on Joe for many of the initiatives I am hoping to expand, not only within our CTE programs, but with industry credentials, career pathway development in the K-12 space, and connections to our trade unions around Lake County and Northeast Ohio. The connections he has established and continues to build on a daily basis are nothing short of amazing, and we are extremely lucky to have him here in our district. I would like to congratulate the Ohio CTE Administrator of the Year, Dr. Joe Glavine.
One additional item that I wanted to mention before we get started with the rest of the meeting is I have received a couple of questions regarding the NearPod contract that is on our agenda this evening, so I wanted to clarify a few things with that product so everyone knows how we use it. We originally started using NearPod when we first went one-to-one with devices back in the 2014 or 2015 school year. The tool is for teachers to be able to use interactive presentations with their classrooms. For example, if a teacher is teaching about the parts of a cell and wants to check if their students are understanding the concept, within the presentation slides they have created for their class, they can include a slide asking each student to draw their version of a cell and label the parts. The teacher can then see each student's drawing and quickly know whether students are understanding that concept. The other part of NearPod that we use is their digital citizenship curriculum. Students do not have access to any content in NearPod. The teacher actually provides an access code to the students in their class that links them to their specific presentation slides. Because we only use their digital citizenship curriculum, the racial justice and LGBTQ+ presentations that were linked to those blog posts that were shared with us do not apply to our subscription. Mr. Lynch even went so far as to separate out the SEL curriculum that NearPod had packaged with the digital citizenship curriculum a couple of years ago so that we are only using the curriculum we want our teachers to use. The contract we have on the agenda today will allow us to use NearPod in the same exact manner we have the last eight or nine years. It does not add any curriculum to our subscription. It just maintains that digital citizenship component that we find valuable for our students. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, approve a little minutes. We have motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, hearing of the public on agenda items only.
Our first speaker is Jamie Sandy.
That's going to be his decision.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamie Sandy. Thank you for calling me forward.
Mr. Lynch, time.
Oh, thank you.
One second, sir.
Three minutes. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you. So I live neighboring to Mentor. I am from Kirtland and a resident, and I follow Mentor a lot because we do business in Mentor. We do sales in residential, and I had an opportunity very briefly today to look at the minutes for the mentor school and the board, and with reviewing some of the notes and not being fully aware of everything that's going on, because I just have young children and I started getting involved in our local schools recently, I guess when you have children, you kind of look at the education, and I just wanted to encourage everybody today in our schools and our local communities because it's so important and imperative is that education is for teaching, and in Mentor, you have some of the best facilities and community, I always like to say, the parents and families in the community, and I believe that education is meant to educate these children and never to indoctrinate for any particular reasons, for any flags or anything other than the American flag and what it stands for. I'm a proud American. I love our country dearly, and I think that there is a lot at stake in our children right now and their education, and I think that it's important for parents to always have the role in their children's life, for disciplining and to be in addition to education, but not some form of indoctrination on any level. So today, I just wanted to commend everybody that's obviously here that works so hard for Mentor because your city is renowned in the area, and I just wanted to show my support with Debbie and many of her colleagues, obviously, as well as, please help keep education to education and not indoctrination. And that's why I just came here today for my small children, and I appreciate the opportunity to have these three minutes. All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before our next speaker, I'd like to remind you that on agenda items only is this first section, so thank you very much. Next.
Our next speaker is Rachel. There was no last name given.
Oh.
Yes, Rachel Perry.
Oh, you did have that one.
She did it online.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, President Tuttle. It is nice to see you again. I'll be brief. I promised the board to take a pledge that I will always vote in favor of a school levy. I take voting very seriously. I understand that our ancestors died in the Revolutionary War, so I would have a say in how my government is ran. I also understand that had I been born only 60 years earlier, I would not have been born with the right to vote, so I take it seriously. I vote for school levies because I think it is in the best interest of the children and teenagers of this community. That vote of mine is not for sale. No offense, President Tuttle, but your vote on any political policy stunt is not going to influence the way I vote on such an important issue such as funding. There may be people here, Mr. President, that choose to weaponize their school levy vote in that way. That is their right, and that is their cross to bear. But I promise to never use my vote in a way that will be disadvantageous to the important funding and budget issues that are a huge factor in providing the best public education to kids. I understand fully that responsible budgeting and funding is a huge factor in providing the best and safest educational institutions for our community. It is in the best economic interest for all of us that this levy be put on the ballot and passes with a majority in favor vote. Thank you, President Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Debbie Wolfhold.
I ask, how did our decent community ever get to this point? For clarification, I have always voted yes on levies for the past 40 years in Mentor. I'm only going to discuss my top nine reasons tonight for voting no on this new levy. I could probably go on for an hour, but I won't. Number one, this school board constantly rejects and ignores the will, input, and priorities of the parents in our community. Number two, this school board misused $110,000 to purchase K-5 collaborative classroom book collection that is not age-appropriate into our elementary school libraries. Number three, this school board puts their agenda of boys are allowed in the girls' bathrooms over the privacy and safety of our female children. Number four, the school board administered secret pronoun surveys to our minor students without parental consent and did not disclose the answers that were given. Number five, the school board advocates for pornographic and obscene reading material under the guise of statements regarding, oh, the author's award-winning status or the false book banning label. Number six, this school board just spent in fiscal 2023 $4,650,000 on sports improvements, which included football and baseball fields plus weight room updates. Number seven, some members of this school board approved $290,000 on a Better Lesson program that trained educators on successfully implementing CRT and racist ideology to our students. The program was pulled, but still a perfect example of wasteful spending of our tax dollars. Number eight, this school board paid our former superintendent a salary of $180,000. Now they're advocating for a raise for this current woke superintendent. This employee will not stop the sale of pronoun buttons in the lunchroom, and he won't even make eye contact or respond to any emails that the Mentor community members write to him, and we are the ones he represents. And number nine, this school board has forgotten the value of true quality education. They are more concerned with pandering to an ideology that has brought down the test scores and caused parents to homeschool to gain back excellence in education and to gain back faithful morals for their children. We are awake, and we will not allow you to implode our school system with our hard-earned tax dollars as you continue to destruct our property values. My neighbors and I will be voting no until Mentor corrects this mess. I ask again, how did our decent community ever get to this point?
Kimberly Ann.
I am Kimberly Ann, and I live on Quail Point Lane, and I had questions about the NearPod software that you answered in your opening statement, so thank you for that. How did you come to that decision?
Continue.
How did you come to the decision to not include...
Questions are directed to me.
How did you come to the decision to not include the LGBTQ portions of the software? And thank you for not including them. My questions tonight were about that specific portion.
Well, that was done at the time back when we started that program. What year was that?
2014.
2014. So I don't know how they came to that conclusion, but we're certainly not going to go somewhere we haven't been before with that program. It's functioning as we designed or agreed for that process.
I appreciate that. Everything this lady said, I second. I will not be voting to support the levy for all of the reasons that she stated, and thank you for stating those reasons.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, all. My name is Lauren Breslin, and I live on Galloway Court in Mentor. Tonight, I will be addressing the issues of levies. It is my understanding that this school board may have been irresponsible in their funding of leftist ideologies, political agendas, and academic activism. This must stop. I'm what's called a social media influencer. I have several personal, professional, and political accounts across multiple platforms, and I can assure you that voters across the country are now fully awake. They are paying close attention to the actions of their community leaders and representatives. Most are not able to attend or speak at these school board meetings due to work schedules, family activities, or fear of retribution. I know this to be true even in our Mentor community. For example, when I attend birthday parties or fire pit hangouts in my neighborhood, my neighbors recognize me, and they thank me. They watch our school board meetings online. They are amazed that even though I homeschool my four children and I've only been in Mentor a short while, I make the effort to build relationships, learn about the issues, and then speak up about my research and opinions. I am able to do this because there is no one in this city that I fear or who can retaliate against my family. And what are the issues at the core of this potential retaliation for my neighbors? First, the failure to set and achieve academic expectations and standards. Second, safety, privacy, and fairness for all children, but especially girls who are currently still subjected to bathroom and locker room altercations. And third, the fiscal irresponsibility of funding social justice services and LGBTQ+ activism. These three issues alone are being broadcasted all over social media, and momentum is gaining in opposition to any proposed levies. Finally, in doing my research for these talking points, I learned that a failed levy would enter the district into a fiscal distress process with the Ohio Department of Education. This process has three phases: fiscal caution, fiscal watch, and fiscal emergency. An NPR article from March of 2023, which focused on Ohio tax levies, stated, I quote, "If a school district is projected to operate at a deficit, the state will require the school to submit a plan to address its budget concerns. At this stage, if voters do not pass a levy within the fiscal year, the district will be under fiscal watch," which leads to a fiscal emergency. "A fiscal emergency puts the finances of the district under the control of a commission created by the state tasked with developing a recovery plan for the school system. Once a district is in a fiscal emergency, it could take years to dig itself out and change its status." End quote. "This school board should not be asking for additional money from taxpayers until they get back to academic basics and provide a quality education within a safe environment. Mentor voters are paying attention, they are participating in online discussion forums, and they are leaning towards not passing any levies."
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Here we are again at another board meeting, talking about the same subjects. Yeah, I would love to know what you're writing down on the paper because we've been talking for three years, and are we playing tic-tac-toe, or are we taking notes and listening to people? Because you can't look people in the eye. I don't understand that, Mr. Heath, at all, but I would appreciate your time and your respect. It's a long list of stuff that somebody else mentioned earlier that you just haven't given us the due respect. Absolutely, positively opposed to any more woke books and woke programs that this school system, this board, and this superintendent, and the Teachers Association, whatever, whomever is calling these shots, it's got to stop. Got to stop. And we are absolutely, positively going to be doing everything we can between now and November, or whenever this goes on for election, to vote down any and all school levies that are going to continue to promote political activism, politically charged subjects that don't need to be in school. These are children that come here for an education. We moved to Mentor to give our kids an education in one of what used to be one of the best school systems in the nation, in the country. Now our school system is written about internationally, on a national level and internationally, for everything that's going wrong in our school system. We should be embarrassed. This room should be filled with people that are absolutely irate about this. You guys have decisions to make. There's going to be voting in November. There's going to be some changes. Swift changes are coming. Swift changes are coming. The levies are going to go down, and they're going to go down hard. I predict this. I declare this. You guys need to start listening. No more of this woke stuff. Stick to educating our kids enough of this stuff. Our kids need to be taught basic education and how to live in society and not have all this stuff pushed on them. Sex education does not start in kindergarten. Sex education starts when the parent of the child determines that it's time for sex education to start, and you have no right, no authority whatsoever. These kids do not belong to you or the school system. You guys work for us, and it's getting time that we start flying right, or we need to resign to positions and get out and go become the political activists that you want to become. We don't need it here. We need people that are concerned about children's well-being and about their education and about the parents and about this community. A realtor stood up and said they can't even sell houses anymore because our education system is in such bad shape. Thanks for listening. Thank you.
Mr. President, board members, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. The strength of our schools depends on its financial support. To provide a safer environment for our students, we need to upgrade physical structures significantly. We've all talked about this. Without additional funding, this will either be left undone, or the funds will have to come from the general fund at the expense of the meat of the school system, its academics. We all know the cost involved in keeping our properties in good shape. We need the permanent improvement levy to provide the funds to keep all of our school buildings in good repair. Again, without dedicated funds for this, the money comes from the general fund or our facilities, buses, and equipment with a lifespan of over five years are not replaced or repaired in a timely method. The renewal of the general operating levy is a no-brainer. Since this is a renewal, there will be no increase in our property taxes. I have attended board meetings for almost two years, and during that time, I have been impressed with Mr. Wade's financial presentations. They are complete and transparent. They have proven how well the board uses our tax dollars and why they are now asking for the renewal and the permanent improvement levies. And our property values depend on the quality of our school. I will vote yes on those two levies, and I will urge others to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Carol Ashdown.
I'm going to pass. They said everything I thought.
Thank you. Kathy McAdams.
Thank you for having me this evening. I guess I could be considered a social media influencer, too. I'm asked by family and friends about issues and candidates. They know that I research everything and that I don't make my decisions lightly, and I'm always asked for this information. You'll be voting today about two levies that will increase the tax burden of homeowners and renters. For the owner of a home valued at $248,000, which I believe, maybe it's $284,000, which I believe is the median price of a home in Mentor, will increase at least $248 a year. Now, if those levies pass, they will likely cause citizens to lose their homes or apartments, possibly causing homelessness. Will the parents need to decide between food, utilities, or a tax bill? How many families are one paycheck away from being evicted or foreclosed on? There's a lot of them, trust me. Think of the children this will affect. Children who may already only have one parent, children... Children who may already only have one parent, children already are already hungry. Children will suffer the most. Think of the family members and neighbors who are senior citizens barely squeaking by financially. Will that cause them to lose their home they've lived in for 40 or 50 years? How will they afford the tax increase? My, as I told in email to the board last week, my cost of living increase in my social security wasn't $248 a year. Should they choose between their prescriptions, their food, the utilities, or their tax bill? Why should they have to choose that? Are you willing to have any of that on your conscience? I pray to God that you do what's right by everyone instead of continuing on a political agenda fraught with out-of-control and outrageous spending and not cutting expenses at all. You haven't proven that you can make meaningful cuts in spending. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was our last speaker.
Next on the agenda, superintendent's report recommendations.
Couple of quick updates before we jump into the consent agenda this evening. First of all, with the Media Center checkout process, we were continuing to work through that suggestion that was made by Mrs. Cook at a previous meeting regarding parent notifications of the books students are checking out at the Media Center. Mr. Lynch, our director of innovation and technology, has been working with our media specialist and the software vendor we use for our library materials to get a process in place to allow parents to receive those email notifications of the books and materials that their children are checking out of any of our school libraries. This will be an opt-in process where families will, that want to receive the email notifications, will be able to sign up for the service. We will have an email and a form going out to all families to explain the process here in the next few days. Families will also be able to do this through the annual update process through Infinite Campus as well. So, we're making some progress on that, on that project. We had a book challenge at the last meeting as well. I'm continuing to look through both our current board policies and our new board policies through Neola that we hope to have approved at the August 8th board meeting to determine what steps I will take to resolve the issue. As I mentioned to the detective from the Mentor Police Department who called the day after the book challenge was issued to let me know that our district had a criminal charge filed against it because the book, The Bluest Eye, is a supplemental book in our high school curriculum. There's a process that we have to follow to remove books from our libraries, from our curriculum. Typically, that process is for me to send the book through a committee to review and make a report for me to make a recommendation to the board. Members who would serve on that review committee would not be back until middle of August at the earliest. So it would take several weeks for the committee to complete that review and provide me with that report. With our Neola policy manual work just about complete, I should be able to make a decision on what direction I will be heading with this book challenge here very soon. We had a food market last week, the week before, and it was our first food market. It was on Thursday, June 29th. It was a huge success in collaboration with the United Way of Lake County, the City of Mentor, Hynans, and the Greater Cleveland Food Bank. We were able to distribute all 6,400 pounds of fresh produce to families in need from our community. We provided food to 245 individual households representing over 1,000 people that were served. We will host our next food market on Thursday, July 27th, from 12 to 2:00 p.m., just outside the football stadium. So that was a very good event. Mrs. Cook will be sharing more information in her update here in just a second on academic achievement, but I wanted to give everyone a quick overview of our state test scores for the 22-23 school year. Happy to report that we had increases in 14 of the 20 tested areas this year and saw some significant increases. And we saw some significant increases in our math scores, which is one of my personal goals here for this year. We spent about four hours at our district leadership team meeting in June poring over these numbers to identify the areas of strength and where we still need to improve so that we can put our resources and intervention programs exactly where we need them. We are looking forward to getting more details about our state report card here in mid-September to see how these scores impact the new star rating system that ODE put out last year. And finally, I want to thank all of our board members here publicly for their hard work and dedication to the creation of our new Neola policy manual. We have been working, we will be having a work session here next week to review the manual and any individual policies that they would like to discuss more in depth prior to final approval of the manual in August. There are nearly 500 individual policies that have been edited, read, reviewed, and wordsmithed to get the language exactly the way our board members want it to be. As we have discussed previously, this is the primary function of the Board of Education, to set policy that gives our district direction. With this comprehensive policy in place, we will have the most up-to-date policies that follow the state laws, federal guidelines, and most recent court cases to move our district forward. So again, I want to thank each of you for all of the work that you've done to complete this project. Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 6A1 through 6A2.
So moved.
Second.
Please call a roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the agreement between Crossroads Health.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call a roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the memorandum of understanding with Lakeland Community College.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call a roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the NearPod district license.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I do have a little bit of discussion. I know we are kind of exchanging back and forth in reference to this organization. I know we've been using it for a while, and I don't believe that, you know, any of our teachers would go and use those courses. The email that you had sent states that the two links that were LGBTQ with the whole how you can include Pride stuff in your classroom, and then also there was a racial justice piece, you stated that that was only sent out to their subscribers of NearPod. Are our teachers subscribers, if we agree to this contract?
We get the district license, so our teachers will get some of those updates, yes. So they would get that information. But again, it's not, that's outside of the scope of what our subscription is.
So they wouldn't get those emails?
They would get the emails, but they wouldn't have access specifically to all of that curriculum that's there because we're focusing on the digital citizenship curriculum.
Okay, so if they got, if they received the email, they wouldn't be able to actually, like, click on those links and open them up?
They'd be able to open those up.
But it's not part of our paid.
And see what's there, but it's not part of.
The paid contract.
Correct.
Okay.
Is it similar to, I'm sorry, is it similar to, like, an advertisement? You know, the email that they're getting that's like, this is the content that we have, is that?
Yeah, so what NearPod does is they send out, like, very regular updates, daily, weekly updates on, hey, here's how to use this tool within NearPod, here's how to use this curriculum within NearPod. And those updates are sent out on a pretty regular basis. Those two, I believe, were probably sent out during February and June, which would be Black History Month for the racial justice component, and then June for Pride Month with the Pride resource.
So my only concern would be, almost like the Better Lessons organization, we had an issue with them, you know, we're not currently using the slideshows anymore that they, that were an issue that were divisive. But I personally wouldn't support their organization going forward, even if they didn't include that stuff, only because I feel like it is going to be divisive, and there's not a lot of buy-in from all the parents that this is, you know, something that they would agree with, having that kind of political ideology platform. So I just don't agree with, I understand how we use it, and I'm glad that we're not using that portion, but because we don't have a policy that states, you know, that those things shouldn't be accessed, the fact that they are sending them out to their subscribers and they have access to it makes me a little hesitant, especially given the Better Lessons situation. So I understand the explanation, I appreciate it, but I personally can't support it with tax dollars because it is a little bit divisive and politically charged with some of their materials.
And what I would share with everyone, too, I'm, obviously, our teachers, our curriculum department, me, Mr. Wade, very, very cognizant of the politically charged environment we have here in Mentor. Every, every decision that we're making now, there are hours and hours of conversation that go into those things. We are at the point with, I know someone brought up the Better Lessons pieces to the puzzle, and we're using that contract in a different way now. We are actually in the practice of now requesting all of the professional development slides from every person that presents to our staff, and our directors are combing through each of those to make sure that any divisive content is being removed. And we're using the resources that we have purchased here for the district in the way that they are intended for us to be using them. That's why our focus with this particular item is on that digital citizenship curriculum, which is some of the best that's out there.
And I appreciate that. I think that that provides a little bit more insight. Just personally, from my standpoint, I have consistently voted no when it comes to things that do have any kind of platform with a political ideology push, which could be, you know, objectionable to a certain, you know, number of parents or community members. So, since it's not completely neutral, I can't support it. But I understand and I appreciate your points.
Thanks.
Further discussion? Please call a roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
No.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel, and C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call a roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
I'm also recommending approval of Agenda Item D related to administrative staff.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call a roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Did you do the board?
Seems odd if I were to do my own contract.
Let me read it, I mean, I can. Don't want any conflict with that, though. Board of Education's report and recommendations. It's recommended that resolution reappointment of Bill Wade as Treasurer Chief Financial Officer and authorizing an employment contract for the Treasurer Chief Financial Officer be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to say kudos. I think Mr. Wade has done a fine job. I think he is always bringing light, not only to our board meetings, he's done a really good job with his slideshows, and I appreciate everything that you have done. I think you've done a very good job.
Thank you.
Further?
I think we all agree, you're very transparent with the community, you're able to explain everything, and you really take the time to explain any questions that anyone has, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you very much, Mrs. McAdams? No, I'm sorry. You spoke up, right? Don't I get your name right? Kathy, pardon me. You said it, you said it all about Mr. Wade. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm going to need to take you guys home for Thanksgiving.
I just wanted to add that. Double, double that string.
Show my mom this video.
His wife.
Please call a roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
So now I get to read the next resolution with his name on it. It's recommended that resolution authorizing an addendum to the Treasurer's employment contract be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I don't need to say more. Let's.
Please don't.
Call a roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, you can read three and four. Correct.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Heath, I ask for the approval of the resolution submitting to the electors of the Mentor Exempt Village School District, the question of renewal of an existing tax levy to avoid an operating deficit be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to make some comments only because we have heard a lot from our community, but I think the vote truly belongs in the hands of the community members and at the recommendation of Mr. Wade. I do respect his recommendation to go ahead, and I will vote for both levies going on the ballot for a vote. I think it's important that the community does have a voice in this and that it gets to the ballot, so I just wanted to explain my vote on that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Please call a roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Heath, ask for the approval of the resolution submitting to the electors of the Mentor Exempt Village School District, the question of approving an additional 2.5 mil permanent improvement tax levy be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call a roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Breiner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Next on the agenda, legislative report?
That's the way I feel about the legislative report, but it's not as long as usual, so. We'll dive right in. All right, the state's two-year operating budget was signed by Governor Mike Dwyane on July 4th. This came after the House and the Senate Conference Committee members settled many of their differences on the deadline day. Though the budget changed numerous times along the way, one thing stayed the same. Those supportive of public education are a little disappointed due to some of the policy changes. Ed Choice voucher expansion was kept in the final form of the budget and is set to cost Ohio taxpayers an additional $825 million compared to what it is currently spending on vouchers. No additional assessment measures, report cards, financial reporting, or audit stipulations have been tied to Ed Choice voucher expansion, leaving Ohio taxpayers in the dark if this increased public spending is beneficial to all or only non-public schools and their private interests. Changes to the State Board of Education were also kept in the final version of the budget signed by. signed by Governor DeWine. The partially elected SBOE is to be stripped of all but its regulatory powers and will no longer be acting in any significant way on behalf of the citizens they represent across Ohio. Now, the major policymaking powers previously held by the SBOE will be given to a cabinet-level agency, the Ohio Department of Education, and workforce. Though there is much to be disappointed about with HB 33, there are still some wins for public education. Some notable portions of House Bill 33 are as follows. Reduces the number of personal income tax brackets to just two with rates of 2.75% and 3.5%. Uses fiscal year 2022 data for base cost inputs. Maintains the capacity calculation as designed based upon 60% property value and 40% income of the residents. 20% based on the district's federal adjusted gross income per pupil and 20% adjusted median per pupil. Increases the minimum state share percentage for districts from 5% to 10% in each of fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25, and includes the funding for a comprehensive study on the needs of economically disadvantaged students. Amends the mandatory student retention under the law, known as the third-grade reading guarantee, to permit a student to be promoted to the fourth grade if the student's parent or guardian consults with the student's reading teacher and principal, and they agree to the student's promotion, regardless of whether the student is at reading level, and requires the student to continue receiving reading intervention services until the student reads at grade level. Requires ODE to provide reimbursements to make school breakfast and lunch free for all students eligible for reduced-price meals. Increases the new teacher-based salary to $35,000 and adjusts the step-teacher salary schedule. Requires all sports gaming revenue to be used to support public and non-public education for students K through 12. Requires each school district provide free feminine hygiene products to girls enrolled in grades 6 through 12. Requires schools to accept cash at athletic and school events with a limited exemption for an event at a public facility that is leased by a professional sports team or a privately-owned facility. Governor DeWine spoke on the victories in this budget, including the inclusion of the science of reading during a press conference on July 5th. DeWine said, "Spreading the science of reading to every school in the state so that every child is taught what we now know is the best way to learn to read will be our first and number-one priority." DeWine briefly touched on his expanded responsibilities and cabinet with the creation of the Department of Education and workforce. Again, only speaking on expanding the science of reading across the state and leaving out that the budget removes nearly all the partially-elected SBOE's educational responsibilities and gives it to a governor's appointee, who will be named in the near future. The State Board will now be responsible only for teacher licensure and territory transfers. And we have some recently introduced legislation. House Bill 206, sponsored by Reps Gary Click and Monica Robles-Dell, relates to the expulsion of a student from a public school for actions that endanger the health and safety of other students or school employees. This bill has had one hearing in the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. House Bill 211, sponsored by Rep Jennifer Gross, which would require a public body to permit members of the public to comment or testify about matters of public concern before the public body at its public meeting, and name this act the Free to Speak Act. This bill has been referred to the House State and Local Government Committee. House Bill 214, sponsored by Rep Adam Holmes, which would require each public school to adopt a policy regarding certain expectations related to the performance of staff member professional duties. This bill has had one hearing in the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. House Bill 216, sponsored by Reps Mary Lightbody and Josh Williams, requires the Department of Education to develop a process for requesting an investigation of a school's compliance with its policy prohibiting harassment, intimidation, or bullying. This bill has been referred to the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. House Bill 219, sponsored by Reps Adam Byrd and Sean Brennan, regards the College Credit Plus program. This bill has been referred to the House Higher Education Committee. And House Bill 235, sponsored by Rep Sarah Fowler-Arthur, would make changes regarding membership and election of the SBOE members in the State Board's public meetings. This bill is awaiting committee referral. Last one is SB 128, sponsored by Senator Catherine Ingram, requires disclosure of the for-profit status of community school operators and post-secondary educational institutions on various promotional materials and contracts for employment. This bill has been referred to the Senate Education Committee.
I had a question about that. Mr. Wade, you had sent us an update about specifically, I think, how it was House Bill 33 affected us. We actually received more money? Was, is that right?
We're projected right now, based on the most recent estimates, to receive about, over the next two years, a total of $933,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Breiner, was it 211 that you said was regarding the bullying and the administration of reporting that? Proposed? I didn't get the number. Recently.
216.
What was it?
216.
216? Thank you.
And that's data, Mr. Heath, that I, I know every year I've been asking to pull, we pull the private schooling and the homeschooling from mentor-only mentor students to see kind of the, where that is going. So that'll be interesting. We can pull that for this year, right? Because the Ed Choice voucher program expansion, that's effective for this upcoming school year?
I believe so.
It's my understanding as well.
For 23, 24.
Okay. So we'll be able to pull numbers and just kind of see.
Yeah, so we'll pull those again like we have done before. And one other thing I'll just mention with the bullying piece to the puzzle, too, because I know that's been brought up on a couple of occasions. Been working very closely with our Director of Communications on how we post that information. Because, again, we post that, and the numbers look really low. And then it's just not a transparent process at all. And it meets the letter of the law. But one of Ms. Estes's goals this year was to try and be a little bit more open and transparent with that. So we're hoping that, I actually wrote down a note to get with her tomorrow to see where we're at with that. I know we've got some preliminary information and explanation on that. That will not only list just the bullying pieces, but getting into the harassment. The other, kind of the second tier, I can't even remember the name that we call it, but like mean behavior type of activity that goes on, so that we're very clear with that as well. So we hope to have that out to the community here very soon.
And is there a way, because I know a lot of parents will say, you know, my kid was bullied, but they didn't necessarily maybe meet the requirement of what the Ohio revised code is of bullying. But, you know, and I know we can't disclose if a child is bullied, what that other person, you know, what kind of consequence they're going to receive. Is there any way that we can include that in the handbook? Like, even if it doesn't meet bullying, but if it's X, Y, and Z? So parents do know if it is this, then that child will at least have this kind of consequence? Just.
Yeah. And one of the things that we're looking at, even as we're reporting those bullying activities and the harassment and mean behavior activities, is the types of consequences that potentially could be there. You know, whether it's a, you know, a restorative practice. Was it a detention? Was it a suspension? Was it an expulsion? We can show some of that overall data as well. So we're looking at how that might be reported here in the future, too, just to make sure we're, again, we want to be as open and transparent as we can with some of that. And that's not unique to Mennor at all. In my previous districts, we've gotten questioned all the time. Hold on, I know there's a lot more stuff going on than that. And there is. It just doesn't meet that level of that technical definition. So we're going to be a little bit more open with that here moving forward.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
In the course of the discussions we've had about policy, we talked at some length about how students will be better acquainted with expectations other than just in the handbook. You know, sometimes that may not be read closely enough just so that everyone's clear what those behavioral expectations are, that how we treat one another and so forth. So, you know, that that's something you have in mind.
You know, that'll be good conversation for us for next week as well when we have that first reading of the policy so that we can be clear on some of that, too. Because that might trickle into the administrative guidelines then, too.
Yes.
And how we, how we report, how we educate, how we share that with students and families moving forward.
And that's the nice part of having administrative guidelines, is that we do have access for the public and parents to see, even though it might not be exactly in a policy, they can drill down to the administrative guideline and see how we administer, you know, that policy. So I think that's helpful, too. And good points, Ms. Jessling.
Thank you.
Student achievement report?
Student achievement.
Mrs. Cook?
Thank you. We do have our state assessment data back now. And so tonight I chose, because we're not in session, we're having less things going on, to just focus on the math and the English Language Arts state test assessment data. So what you're seeing on the screens, and I'll try to kind of walk through everything here. You're going to see two chunks of bar graphs. And the ones on the left are our district scores. And I've reported them, I've color-coded them, 2019, 2021, 2022, 2023. And then to the right are the state scores. So the state average, the state average score is on the right, and on the left are our district scores. So what you're looking at with the number, the percentage there is the percentage of our students on that particular assessment that scored within the proficient range, so met the proficient expectation. And there's a few things as we look through. I'll try to kind of just highlight some things. We've definitely, you know, identified where we need to work, where we're making progress. But as you're looking at it, I think it's informative to see, do our trends follow the same trends as the state? Where we were pre-COVID with the 2019 numbers, pre-COVID. 2020 is not included because there was not testing in 2020. And then 2021 is that first year post-COVID. And you'll notice just throughout all of the slides that all of the numbers go down there with, both throughout the state and with our district. So I hope that that is a good preemptive. We'll talk about Grade III English Language Arts and go through. And I might call on Mr. Heath to please jump in if I'm not explaining it correctly. So for Grade III English Language Arts, you'll notice that we made that dip. Our trend is very similar with the state. We are exceeding the state average all four years. We have not met pre-pandemic numbers yet. We are working towards it, and we had a slight decline from last year to this year for Grade III English Language Arts. If we look at Grade IV English Language Arts, we are doing better than the state on all four years. Our trend is actually also better than the state as well. We've made consistent progress there. We are not at pre-pandemic numbers yet. However, we are making more growth than the state average. Grade V English Language Arts, we are struggling with Grade V. This is something that we have been talking about as a team as well. Our Grade V is something we need to dig into a little bit. Our numbers are consistently above the state for all four years. We are approaching pre-pandemic numbers. We're not there yet, but we saw a dip from the last year. Grade VI English Language Arts, they are doing fantastic, well above the state average for all four years. And we are above pre-pandemic numbers for the last two years for Grade VI. So doing well there. Grade VII English Language Arts, we are almost at pre-pandemic numbers, consistently significantly higher than the state average numbers for all four years. And very significantly so on that. So Grade VII English Language Arts is doing very nicely. And Grade VIII English Language Arts has also exceeded pre-pandemic numbers, is significantly higher than the state average all four years. And then finally, we are at High School Language Arts. High School Language Arts has only tested, this would be like a sophomore class. That's the only time that the state does test language arts. So it's Language Arts II? That is correct? And you can see we are well above, all four years, well above. We are almost at pre-pandemic numbers here. And while the state has a trend, and this is all of the schools in the state of declining numbers, we are not declining at all. We are rising. And it just shows what an excellent program we have there. Is there anything you want to add before we move on or clarify?
No, you're doing great.
Great results.
Very nice. All right, we're going to dive into math now. As everyone knows, if you've been following along, math is the area that we saw the greatest need in. We were really struggling in math as a district, and we initiated a pilot program with the Open Up Math Resources. We added extra supports in place and educational coaches. So we had, oh, I don't remember the last time I reported on it, but we were looking at our district numbers for math. And we saw great gains. And that's where, as a board, we adopted that Open Up curriculum that we had piloted this year to go on for the next year because we were really appreciating those results. So this is the first peak that we have had at our Ohio State Assessment Data. So let's look at that. Right now on the screen, you have Grade III math. It was so shocking to me as I was creating these graphs how much the trend line is the same with the state. Now, our numbers are consistently over the state average. But you'll notice, you know, where everyone else in the state dipped, we did, too. And then we build up. So you can see us coming back, not at pre-pandemic numbers yet, but moving towards making growth. Grade IV math. Excellent here. We are not at pre-pandemic, but approaching pre-pandemic. 84.4% of our students met the proficient level for Grade IV math compared to 67% with the state numbers. We made great growth between this year and last year. Grade V math, this is our fifth grade that we, I know our leadership teams have been working on seeing where our gap is with this last year. We do have a dip between 2022 and this year's numbers with a 62.1%. So we are not, we were not increasing. We are over the state numbers. We are, you know, consistently over the state average numbers, but not where we want to be with that grade level. Grade VI math is making growth Grade six math is making growth over the state, again, over the state numbers. Our numbers are higher than the state average consistently over all four years for grade six math. However, we are, and we are making growth, but we are not at pre-pandemic numbers yet. Grade seven math, we are approaching pre-pandemic numbers. Some really nice growth between last year and this year, and significantly over the state average at, with the state average being at forty-eight percent proficiency. Grade eight math, we have, this one is a little bit, this one has a little bit of an asterisk next to it. It is our lowest number, and I want to explain some reasoning behind that. This is not the numbers that we want, of course. We're reaching pre-pandemic, and we are considerably higher than the state for three, well, for, for this last year and initially. However, one thing that is different with our district, that not every district does, is our eighth graders are highest math students in eighth grade. They do not take eighth grade math. They take Algebra I. So thirty-five percent, yes, thirty-five percent of our eighth graders were not included in this math test. Thirty-five percent of our students were, you'll see in the Algebra I number. So our highest thirty-five percent of our math students don't take this test, so this does skew our results. Not to say that we don't need to make sure that all of our students succeed, though. If we're looking at Algebra I, this is where, remember, we have a big chunk, we have a, a third, a little over a third of our eighth graders also taking this algebra test. We are significantly over the state average and made tremendous growth. The state average being forty-six percent of students passing Algebra I, and us being at almost seventy-five percent passage proficient rate. Our pre-pandemic numbers are eighty-one percent. We are not at pre-pandemic numbers yet, but making great growth. Where the rest of the state is in a declining pattern. And our final slide is geometry. And in geometry, you'll see that we are also over the state average and made great growth between the last year, but not yet at pre-pandemic numbers. Is there anything you would add for math?
No, I, we'll have science and social studies for the next meeting as well. We're digging through a couple more things with that, just to make sure that we have everything accurate. We spent a lot of time as a district leadership team poring through these numbers, and we'll continue to dig into them to figure out what we need to do to, to get these things to increase. We don't just want to get to the pre-pandemic numbers again, because, again, quite honestly, there, you know, for the last ten to fifteen years, our numbers, especially in, in math, especially at middle school, have been pretty low. And, and we want those things to be much higher than they are. But we're, we're starting to take some steps in the right direction, I think, with that, and that's, that's our hope as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook.
You're welcome.
Wonderful. Mr. Wade?
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Heath, present the financial update for June. That was the last month of our fiscal year, so we have closed out our fiscal year. We did that on the June twenty-ninth meeting, when we approved the final appropriations, and then opened up, and I will share some of that data with the community and the board again here, just to make sure everybody was aware, because I don't think anybody was with us that day. There are very few people. Somebody, few people were with us. So with that, ultimately, the, the main thing is we came down about $535,000 more than we expected in revenue based on the May forecast. We were below our expenditure forecast by just under a million dollars. So in comparison to where I thought we'd be in May, we were about $1.5 million to the better, which means that we deficit spent for the year $12.8 million approximately. This slide always shows kind of where we're at in comparison for June last year to this year. Our revenues this month were up about $655,000. Again, this is just, it comes down to unrestricted funding that we got from the state and our investment earnings coming in higher than we expected, which is both good. You know, we, we continue to get adjustments from the state and interest rates, as though they keep to go up for us. That helps the types of conservative investments that were required by law to do. So we see higher interest rates on those safe, liquid investments that we have to make. So we continue to have higher than expected interest income. Overall, compared to the same period last year, we're about $4 million better. And again, like I said, the $535,000 comes down to about $110 from the unrestricted state aid, and about $315,000 in higher interest earned on our investments. So, Mr. Lynch, you can go to the next slide. Our expenses for the month were down about $815,000. And overall, for the year, we're up $9 million, with the majority of that, as we've talked about, coming in the form of the transfer that we made to the Capital Reserve to fund not only this year, for the next few years. I think it's worthwhile to point out, with the levy now being approved to be on the ballot, if that levy did pass, the money that we did not use, that we transferred from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund 070 would be transferred back. That portion would be transferred back. So we would see a one-time revenue surge if, in the event that the levy did pass, which has been shared multiple times in all of the scenarios that I've shared with the board throughout as well. Going to the next slide, we're a million dollars less spending. The, the main reason, seventy-five percent of that comes down to two purchases that did not hit the books. We are cash basis, so our entire accounting is not based, if you're an accountant, and you're familiar with accrual-based accounting, we're not in accrual-based accounting. We only do that one time a year when we close our books. And then we have our annual report that's done by the Auditor's Office. Otherwise, we're, it's all cash-based. And we did not have, we had purchases for buses. As I've stated a number of times, we purchased five buses a year. We put that in at the beginning of the year. Supply chain issues, they haven't been delivered yet. So we don't release, obviously, the cash to the company until we receive those buses. So those buses were not paid for, even though the money's encumbered, which means that bill carries over to the next fiscal year. So that will show up when those buses come in, so we'll have a, the corresponding spike the next year. So we're down this year. That spike will come back next year. The other portion of that large chunk goes to a truck that we had purchased for the same, same type of issue. Supply chain issues, truck hasn't been delivered yet. Once it gets here, we'll pay the bill, and then that, we'll see a spike in the following year. So where it's a savings this year, it'll be a hit, so to speak, in the future. So that money is there, it'll transfer over, but it wasn't budgeted in the next year's budget, but the money's there because we've already budgeted this year. So it gets kind of confusing because we're cash basis, and we don't, we don't have accounts receivable, accounts payable, if you're more familiar with that type of vernacular. The annual report card, this is, this is big amongst the administrative team grading the treasurer here on the assumptions that I make at the beginning of September based on the budgets they give me. So really, it's a grading of all of us. We share in this grade. So up there I have the revenue that we projected in September, $106,351,000. We expected our budget in September to be $126.3 million. Ultimately, we finished at revenue of $110 million and expenses at just under $123 million. So we were all, you know, ninety-six point six-five percent accuracy on revenue and a ninety-seven point one-three percent on expenses. That would get me something on my fridge at home if I was still in high school myself. That being said, I digress, because ultimately what matters the most is that we were projecting almost a $20 million deficit this year, and we reduced that deficit to just under $13 million, to $12.759 million. So we underspent our budget and had revenue that came in. The revenue one threw me for a loop in two major areas. You know, we're not going to be $110 next year, I wouldn't expect, just based on what happened. If you remember back in the spring when we got our tax payment, I said we got about an extra million dollars that people probably paid early. Because when, if you pay your tax, if you don't do it through your escrow account, which a lot of us do, pay our taxes through our escrow account, but there are people who go into the Treasurer's Office in Lake County or send them a check, and they pay it themselves, and sometimes they pay for the full year rather than just the half year. So some, we don't always know how that's going to work out. I'm thinking that we, you know, my, my guess is the reason why we were higher than expected was about a million of that became from people paying early, which varies from year to year. So next year, we'll see a corresponding decrease by a million dollars, because again, if you pay them early, you're not going to pay them twice. If you want to, feel free to. I will take your checks. But I wouldn't, and I wouldn't recommend that you do either. So, you know, we'll see kind of some of those things that just kind of happen with the way, because again, it's cash basis. So cash comes in, cash comes out. It all kind of depends on when we get timing of things. So things can fluctuate particularly at the end of the year or start of a fiscal year, which we are now in here in July. What happens is, is now we're down, we've had a cash balance of $68.7 million to start the year. We're down to a cash balance of $55.98. So we're still healthy. But the, the, the key here is the fact that we're deficit spending and we're spending down that balance. And that's how funding works in Ohio. You know, you have flat revenue, because all of our revenue is voted in by the taxpayers. The only revenue that we see that's not from the tax basis, and again, seventy percent of our money comes from our local tax base. We get state funding, and we get a little bit of federal funding into the General Fund. Most of our General Fund, most of our federal funding comes in the form, as we've talked about a number of times, outside of the General Fund. So we get a significant portion, about $8 million, that sits outside the General Fund. But we do receive some General Fund dollars in the form of federal aid as well. So as we've talked about a number of times, everyone's experiencing inflation, everyone's experiencing increased costs, as are we. Again, like I, I've shared before, the price of buses have gone up drastically. You know, we've seen hundreds of thousand dollar, you know, a bus that was just below $100,000, now is $140,000. You know, so that's a forty percent increase in two years. I mean, we're, so we're feeling those same, same stresses that you are. So we're cognizant of the comments that were made tonight about the people who are on fixed incomes, because in reality, we're on a fixed income. You know, we owe it to our taxpayers to, to make sure that we're spending our dollars as appropriately as possible and making those cuts. I would argue that we have made cuts, and particularly, we've made substantial cuts over the last two years. And I shared in the May update about $11 million worth of cuts that we were able to garner through continued reduction of staff and through savings through our entitlement incentive, as well as other things that we've done and shared throughout. But I think the reality is, when you have increasing expenses and flat revenue, at some point, you will need additional revenue dollars. I will, so the passage of the levy will allow us to maintain our current revenue stream that we have from the 2014 levy. The PI levy has nothing to do with our General Fund operating expenses, though. I just want to clarify again, that's strictly for permanent improvements. It will allow us to reduce our expenses in the General Fund, because we'll be able to take the buses, the vehicles, the technology and the furniture that we're purchasing out of that, thus lowering our expenses year over year, because we now have a set of money that we are placing on the ballot. Because I agree with Mrs. Payne, it's not, it should be put up for the vote. It's the voter's decision. They control our schools in the sense that they pass the tax revenue that we have. And hopefully, I've shared the, how we're using that money and what it's going to be used for and what it's going to be done for. And the advantage that it has for us, it'll lower those expenses. And that's the impact of that. I, I just want to touch on the fact that a comment was made that we'd be put into distress if we didn't pass the PI levy. That's, we're not at that point yet. That's a little premature. Good research. I, I think it could, you know, that, is that something that could happen down the line if levies don't pass multiple times? Absolutely. If we continue to spend at the rate that we're at, and we continue to flatten that expense curve, right, that's the goal. Each time we try to get it down a little bit closer, you know, year over year, we'll show that in the appropriations as well. But at some point, regardless, even if nobody got a raise, and we laid off people, at some point, just, I mean, you all appreciate this. I mean, it's the same thing that Mr. McAdams said. Inflation's higher than your COLA increase or cost of living increase. You're going to, at some point, not have enough revenue to support that, and that's the same situation that we're in. It's, it's the job of Mr. Heath and his team and me to explain the impact of the decisions that we make on what that does. I often weigh into those discussions, probably to the demise of my colleague to the left, because of my experience. But the reality is, is we are a good team, and we're looking at those things to do that. And we're always trying to find ways to, to cut costs so that every year here, when we do our annual closure out, that the June final expenses are much less than what we projected back in September. Because things change. And then, you know, we live within our five-year forecast, we make those updates, and we try to be as close as we possibly can. Mr. Lynch, can you go through the next slide? And I know you can't read this. Because, but what is ultimately most important on this sheet? And it was, I'll try to get it aligned for everybody, is the fact that in the fiscal year '23, we were projected at, or excuse me, in '22, we were projected at $116 in our appropriations, and now we're down to $114 two years later. So our appropriations, even for this year, are less than they were two years ago, even with the inflationary costs. And that goes back to the reduction in staffing. It goes back to the retirements and replacing people for cheaper teachers in classified staff. It goes back to the healthcare concessions that our staff has made. It goes back to reductions in budgets by 10% two years ago. Mr. Heath's decree to, with the teams, to reduce budgets by again another 5%, in, in trying to find ways to save costs. And obviously, if you looked at the last slide, we're probably going to be below expenses of $114, ideally, going into the end of the year, because we're always off, no matter how tight we try to budget. We usually have our appropriations a little bit higher, anywhere from 2% to 3% than we actually spend year over year. So, you know, I'd just like to show that, because I think, and this is what was approved as the temporary appropriations. We'll approve the final appropriations in September, and I'll go into a lot more detail, much to the demise to Sergeant in the back, who tries to keep me honest before every meeting. Thank you, Sergeant Walker. But the reality is, is, you know, this is what we are approving now, and it will be pretty darn close to what we approved in September. The, the thing that we're finalizing here, the, the main thing that will change will be our, our, our cost for staff salaries and benefits. Because Mrs. Burnett, though she's been running around like a maniac, trying to hire and replace the people that we are replacing this year, she doesn't have that finalized yet. That won't be finalized probably till the August meeting, is, if she'd probably like to have it sooner, I'm sure. But, and once we do that, then we can run our first pay in September, and then we have our first meeting. So by the first week of September, I know exactly what we're about. Month over month, our costs will be for salaries, and I can obviously do some simple math to get that, to refine that number and get it as close to what it's realistically supposed to be. So once we come back in September, the, the numbers, though, they'll be closer, they'll probably be even a little bit lower, because we'll know what our, our salary costs are, because that's, that's the biggest estimate. The rest of the, the rest of the values on the sheet aren't going to change very much, if any at all. So I'm happy to answer any questions on, on that.
Mr. Wade, just to clarify, because I don't know if the general community understands what appropriations are. What you're talking about here are how we've reduced expenses?
So, great question. The easiest way to explain appropriations is what's the, the authority the board's given us to spend the money on in specific areas? So you've given us an authority to spend that amount of money for each of those specific areas. So that's our budget, so to speak. And what that last slide showed is how the fact that we've tried to flatten that expense curve over the years so that we cannot, could hold off on asking for a general operating levy into the future. Because again, I always follow up the fact that we are still going to need that in the future, because I don't want someone to say to me, well, hey, we passed if that was so to happen. This, now you're asking for this. Well, no, I've always said it's, it's PI levy, reduction of spending, and then the need for a general operating levy into the future. So just highlighting that trend.
Also, did you have a slide comparing other local districts?
I did, in the event that someone came up with it. I shared it last month, but no one asked about it, because I think, probably because I shared it last month. But we are at the bottom, towards the bottom of the county.
I'd like to see it again. I love this slide.
I'm going to update it, because it's going to, I need to update it for the current schedule that we have for, because we're in tax year '23, collecting on '22, so I'll have that update. And I got to update it now that we're doing our, another community financial report, which will be sent out. I know everyone's going to be waiting by their mailboxes for that. Hope to have that out in September with the help of Ms. Estes. So I'll, I'll share the most recent rankings of where we're at with our effective mileage rate.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And again, I just remind everybody, you know, that, that $12 million that we deficit spent this year was including the transfer out that we had. You know, we transferred out $14 million for this fiscal year, the next three fiscal years. So some level, if you were to subtract that back out, we didn't technically deficit spend, because that money's because that money's still there. We're just using it to spend it in the future.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Heath, I ask for the approval of items B through F.
So moved.
Discussion, we've had it. Thank you. Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion's carried five zero.
Next on the agenda, unfinished business. Do we have any? Mr. Wade? None? New business? Next on the agenda?
I just wanted to mention that we do have a fundraiser. It's not a school-sponsored fundraiser, but there is a fundraiser for one of our Mentor High School students with cancer. And there is a motorcycle run that will take place if you want to take part. It will be this Sunday. They're meeting at eleven o'clock here at the high school, and kick stands up at noon. It is twenty dollars a bike. I understand that they're collecting cash at the event, or they have a GoFundMe page. So if you're looking, looking for that. And I believe that they're ending at All Aboard, which is the old Deekers.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Next on the agenda, hearing of the public on any topic.
Our first speaker is David Lima.
David Lima, Litchfield Drive. We are the proud parents of three Mentor High School graduates who have gone on to have successful careers and are exemplary model citizens. They attended Mentor High when their learning was based on the belief that they had the ability to take in information, evaluate it, and come to their own conclusions. It was a time when students were viewed by their parents as capable, critical thinkers. Some of the ideas being proposed from some in the community are, in my view, restrictive in nature, suggesting that students are unable to differentiate fact from fiction, unable to differentiate truth from falsehood. Freedom to teach and freedom to learn demands just that, freedom. That's the American way. It's the basis of a vibrant democracy, not an authoritarian state. To the Board of Education, do not be pressured in restricting the rich educational experiences now afforded our students. Hold to the view that our students are capable human beings, capable of critical thinking. They hold the promise of becoming exemplary model citizens. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kimberly Anne.
Do you want to fix the time?
He needs a little reminder every once in a while.
Regarding your comments on the inappropriate books, The Bluest Eye and George on your bookshelves, you said there is a procedure to go through in order to remove the books. But I ask if the building were on fire, would you have to consult a bunch of people and be concerned about procedure? Or would you just call the fire department? This book issue is just as terrible as a fire, as so noted by many of us, in that we are expressing that these material go against our religions, against our morals, and against our values. And we have warned you that the books are sexually explicit and don't belong in front of our children. Here's the procedure. Walk over to the bookshelf and remove the book, and then do a better job at voting in books, making sure they are appropriate. Regarding voting no on the levy, Mr. Bill Wade, I think, is mostly excellent with our money. I'm an accountant and have loved his slideshows. I don't agree, though, on spending money on CRT, as it is divisive ideology that is definitely dividing men or citizens. The point of voting no on the tax levy is to impress upon you that you should never have allowed CRT in our classrooms or boys in our, in our girls' spaces. You became political and you forgot your place, and you hurt our community, and you hurt our children. That's not going to go without consequence. We will vote no on the tax levies until you stop participating in divisive political issues. Just go back to teaching core curriculum. And again, Mr. Wade, your slideshows and explanations are indeed both thorough and transparent, and I thank you for that. We should let you know that what you're doing well, when you're doing well. So thank you for that. But as I mentioned, there are huge divisive things that this board are getting wrong. I pray for all of you, and you can straighten this out. I know you can, and I have faith in you. And regarding the state averages versus the district in proficiency, I appreciate your report, but the state averages are in the gutter. They're tanked. They're horrible. So for us to be just above that, that's not something to go home and pat yourself on the back. Still, twenty-five percent, a full twenty-five percent of our students cannot read and cannot do math. That means one in every four of our children should just go home because they're wasting our time. You're wasting their time because you can't teach them. That's not something we should go home and pat ourselves on the back on. And how do we solve that? Just stop playing politics. Stop doing things that are divisive. Stop introducing ideologies. You're concentrating all of your energy on all of these things that have nothing to do with what you're supposed to be doing. Just go back to teaching the core curriculum, and you will make this excellent again. Thank you.
Rose Iopolo.
Iopolo.
I'm not filling out phonetically next time.
Yeah, I apologize. I used to know an Iopolo and Iopolo, yeah, I'll get it right. Sorry, Rose.
That's okay. Okay. I'm speaking to you as an extremely frustrated parent and member of the community. It is evident that Annie Payne is the only one sitting up there who's taking the concerns of the majority of taxpayers seriously. It seems that most of you have forgotten who you work for. So here I am, once again, up here to plead with you to start listening. As you all know, I found myself in a place where members of the community and parents in the district are reaching out and voicing their concerns. They are not asking for much. They want our district to start creating a culture where basic education and safety are a priority. They want the board to do their job and create policy that removes any opportunities for staff to use their discretion when deciding what our kids are being exposed to. They want to know that their school board will not give any more tax dollars to left-wing companies who offer material that indoctrinates rather than educates. Teachers have so much to carry on a daily basis. Expecting them to siphon through material to determine what is appropriate is not their job. Creating policy to allow teachers to teach without the red tape is your job. This board needs to create policy that guarantees there are no blurred lines when deciding what subject matter is appropriate. Ms. Bryner, Ms. Jessling, and Ms. Cook, last year, I watched you vote no to reimburse Annie Payne a very small amount for board training that she received. You felt it was too close to the right politically, and you couldn't support the use of tax dollars for this. Well, by your standards, Near Pod is too far left. Therefore, tax dollars should not be given to this company or any company with, with this kind of agenda. The recent passing of school choice means that parents no longer have to suffer with the district that continues to ignore them. Mentor is a great place to live and to raise a family. The time is now to put your own personal beliefs aside. Start doing your job, or else parents will choose another school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, or good evening. I just, I don't have anything prepared other than I'm, I'm just a, also a frustrated citizen and, and parent. Normally, I would vote for a school levy because I believe that that is beneficial for the children in the community, and I, I always used to, that was my hard and fast rule. I, I would not do it now. I don't believe that we are serving our students well. I think that we allow boys into the girls' bathrooms and locker rooms and pretend that that's not risky, which it is. That's an unsafe environment for the kids, especially girls. We allow pornography in school libraries, and it's unacceptable. That should be a no-brainer. I, I thought about maybe doing some research to explain, like, well, this is harmful, and this study says this, and I, I don't need to have studies. We all know. We know, I don't care if the author is a celebrated author and she's gotten awards. Smut is smut, and it doesn't belong in our schools. We need to do better for our kids. They're not safe. There's a bunch of garbage. This Near Pod, I didn't have a lot of time to research. What I could find, it's garbage. There's, there's, I know that that's something that you want to continue with, but there's a time where you tell the company, like, you know what, we would stay with you, but you are so far to the left, it's, it's ridiculous, and you just, you switch. It's, I just don't think that anybody's listening, and I, you know, for the, the gentleman that spoke earlier, he has young kids. I, I would advise him to keep your kids at home. I think that's the best option here. Until people start listening, you can do much better and keep your kids safe at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Roger Jewell, Mentor resident since nineteen seventy-seven. Still playing tic-tac-toe? Where are we listening to, parents here tonight, Mr. Heath? Please, I'd like your attention. All of this is coming to a stop, guys. All this controversial stuff, this eleventh day of two thousand twenty-three, July two thousand twenty-three, all this political nonsense is coming to a stop. I declare this in the power of the Lord Jesus Christ. And I, amen. Amen. That's right. Say what you want to say. Jesus said to his disciples in Luke seventeen, one through two, "Things that cause people to stumble are bound to come, but woe to anyone through whom they come." Mr. Heath, your first year, we've seen plummeting test scores again. That's why we didn't bring them all here tonight. Open enrollment plummeting, what was it, five hundred and twenty-six people in two thousand twenty-three here, kids that graduated. Bathrooms and locker rooms are still open to the opposite sex, which, by the way, there's only two. Our libraries contain highly controversial books containing pornography and sexually explicit materials, unsuitable for reading at our monthly board meetings, but they're all right to be in libraries. Wonderful, wonderful thought there. One such graphically book glorifying a father molesting his daughter, graphically, graphically and almost proudly talking about this in the book, is allowed in our high school library. And one of our board members okayed this and thought it was all right. Mr. Heath, I want to impose, or I want to suggest that there are hardened criminals locked away in penitentiaries that have higher ethic and moral standards than what this board is displaying. As a father and as a Christian and a God-fearing man, I would not put that book in any library. It belongs in a rubbish pile somewhere, and the person that wrote it needs to be locked up. Just my opinion. Pronouns surveys continue. Sex education is still being sought after for kindergartners. You've instructed the administration and the staff to ignore parents and especially conservative parents. You publicly stated that federal tax dollars are worth more to you than, than our children. This track record gives a whole new meaning to the term killing it on all eight cylinders. It's just not, or hitting it on all eight cylinders. Just not happening. Unfortunately, you're here. Unfortunately, we have to deal with this, but I promise you, this stuff is coming to a stop. It's coming to a stop this day. It's March the beginning to that end. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everyone. My name is Tiffany. I have a young daughter who attends Mentor Schools. I'm a Lakeland College student, and I'm currently in the process of starting a club called Students Against Trafficking. My purpose of talking to you all today is to raise awareness of child sex trafficking and exploitation. There are forty point three million trafficked persons globally today, and twenty-five percent of them are children. Human trafficking is a hundred and fifty billion per year business, more than the NFL, NBA, MLB, and NHL combined. It has eclipsed the illegal arms trade. In two thousand eighteen, a survey of child sex trafficking victims had a fifty-five percent of respondents of being in school while they were being trafficking. Now, I know you've all heard about the movie Sound of Freedom that just came out on July fourth. In regards to child sex trafficking, this movie was based on an incredible true story. Because of the Mentor School District vision includes safety, I believe there should be more awareness of global slavery. There are some things that can contribute to normalization of child exploitations in our school, such as reading material that depicts molestation, rape, incest, and pedophilia in minors. These materials are given to and provided to students by Mentor School Board of Education. Parents and children trust the adults in our schools. These trusted adults should not be providing sexually explicit content to minors. Giving these materials minors, to minors, it is grooming them into accepting this as a normal lifestyle. I'm bringing awareness to our schools and to the communities about the dark reality of children being exploited. I want to add on a positive note that God's children are not for sale, and I encourage every single one of you here to go out and watch the Sound of Freedom, then maybe you'll have a true realization of potential harm you're creating for our students. In suggestion, I believe we should house a parent safety awareness night featuring things that can contribute to child sex trafficking and exploitation. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speakers? That's it. Other discussion?
Got a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Bryner.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Motion carries at five zero. It'll be the end at six forty-eight PM.
Thank you. Get your gun.